Super Hit, 1049 WAXI, Rockville-Clinton.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I think we'll open tonight with Lucas White from Fountain Trust Company.
So I've met a few of you. Good to see you again after a few years. For those of you that don't know, my name's Lucas White. I'm the president of the Fountain Trust Company. I'm here tonight to present a ceremonial check. I understand we've already given you the money. So this check can be good for a whole lot, but we like to do this when we can. We are very happy to be here in Rockville. We've been here quite a while now, probably close to fifteen, twenty years. And I think this is a good example of when communities support their local businesses, the local businesses are able to turn around and support the community back. And so we appreciate your business. We appreciate the town trusting us with your business. You guys have been a very good customer for quite a while at this point, and we certainly appreciate that. So, you know, when you do business with a big out-of-town bank or a big box store, all the money leads the community. And we try to do a very good job of where we take deposits, we make loans in those communities and keep the money working in those communities. So we are happy to be a part of your bicentennial celebration down here, and we're very pleased to be able to do this. So with that, I think Kelsey's gonna take a picture so we can put it in our newsletter. I don't know who wants to be in the picture.
David, get up there.
And you can tell from the signature, Doug is much better than the fancy ceremonial signature than I am.
That look good?
Yes. Got it. Do you want me to tell you?
So you folks been around since nineteen oh three?
Nineteen oh three, yep. That's when the bank was founded. My family did not start the bank. We actually got control of it in the nineteen thirties. My great-grandfather ultimately got control of it, and we run it our own, but it was founded in nineteen oh three.
So you're third generation?
Fourth.
Fourth?
Yep. My great-grandfather ran it up until, I don't know, but I don't know when he died. But probably the sixties, I think. My grandfather ran it up until the late nineties. My dad is still there, of course. He'll never retire. He celebrated his fiftieth year at the bank a few months ago. We did that because he'll never retire, so we couldn't throw a retirement party. So we had a fifty-year org anniversary party for him. But he's still doing well and works every day, and so I'm the fourth generation.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, we do. It's been a long time coming, so. Thank you guys very much.
Have a good evening and thank you for letting us go first.
Thank you.
Are you brand here?
Sorry.
I wanted to introduce myself.
Sorry, I didn't get to come over and see you, but yeah, like, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
While you're up, I'll just let you go. How's that?
Okay. Well, I wanted to start with something I don't have on the agenda, but I wanted to remind those of you that aren't aware, there is a public meeting for the Bike and Pedal Path tomorrow evening at six PM at the Rockville Community Center.
Yeah, tomorrow, Wednesday, yeah.
Yes.
Not Monday, it's Wednesday.
I have a couple flyers on the table there. There is a survey. If you get a chance to take that survey. There's, I think, they've had several, maybe a couple hundred completed the survey as well. They're gonna kind of have an open house type thing tomorrow. You didn't take it?
I don't think so.
Okay, you need to do that tonight.
You know if you did. It wouldn't have been, it doesn't.
But yeah, so they're having an open house. They'd like to welcome. We've kind of shared that on a couple different social media pages, trying to invite the public to attend to see what their projections are for that. So that could be interesting. If you have any more questions or anything like that, you can always ask me about it.
Okay.
So I will start off with my claims in the amount of four forty-eight, two thirty-seven, fifty-five.
You know I'm waiting.
Well, you know, it's pretty, pretty basic stuff. We have all our insurance stuff in there. I was looking at, you know, I was looking at, what was I looking at here? Yeah. Yeah. We have where we paid for the clock there. We had the final payment, I believe, on Jefferson. Ninety-three, two ninety-three.
And that's on some of those money. When you asked me to previously about the, I think it was the Jefferson Street, this one. I think it's on my list of things we'll work together to, all those transfers.
Okay. But yeah, yeah, you made a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay, I have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, and that would be a resolution I need to submit back to IMPA on behalf of Keith Fisher being appointed the commissioner for the Board of Commissioners of IMPA.
Second. All in favor?
And that, just leave some of that one, and I just need one more signature from you. I missed that.
No, wait here, Jeff. I just scribbled on it.
Okay, I've got meeting minutes that I've emailed to you that I don't know if anybody has any questions. I think everybody's gotten back to me that they've reviewed or somewhat reviewed. I think I didn't mark these. I'll send the, I can do them all as one, but I'll send that first, this first few set.
Yeah, these were all sent out last week, weren't they?
These, this last one here, Chris, will be one that you can sign as well.
I move? Do we need to move? How you want this done?
Yep, just all of them. That's fine.
You move, I'll second.
All in favor?
This was just the, it was the January third meeting, because this was the first one. Those are just the others finished. That one's January. Right. The next thing I have is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two. And this one, Jeff, if I could get some input on here, IMPA is just needing to update their service corp maintenance agreement on the following authorized representatives to be able to actually place calls. So I don't know if you have any other individuals besides maybe Brett and yourself. I always put my name on there. Not that I call for any emergencies necessarily, but if there's anybody else's name that needs to be added to that list, they would like an updated.
When do they need that?
Well, I told them I'd getting it approved tonight, and I'd send it back tomorrow. I mean, we don't need a list of employees by any means that need to be.
Right, I think just need that right now.
Okay.
Wasn't it designed, since she was here, and she just now showed up?
Yes. And I know the fire department, of course, always takes care of doing that as well, but if I can just get a motion for that resolution for those members.
All in favor?
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Hey, can we go ahead and add the end of that while we're thinking about it?
Uh huh, yep.
See, gets called out in meetings sometimes also.
Thank you.
Contact number four?
No, I, no, they just need a list of names just to take the authorization for a call from. Okay. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, I've still been working with the state on finishing up our new website, so I don't have a go-live date on that, but it should be probably mid-February, if not before then. So I'll send an email out to everybody with any of the information there. It'll take us a little while, but if you have any suggestions, photos, comments, documents that you'd like uploaded, we'll be, of course, learning how to use that website. But I'll welcome any of those documents that we can start adding to the website as well.
You go.
First night against nuisance properties, Yorkville Apartments. You'll notice the couch is gone. Four fifteen Barton Street, there's an eviction order for February tenth, so they can't really do anything with that property until after the tenth. Four oh one Leatherwood Alley was forwarded to Nick. Seven oh seven Hawk Street was also forwarded to Nick, and those were updates that were forwarded to Nick. There was already property affidavit twelve on. Four fourteen Indiana, four oh seven South College, and ten ten East High Street. We will reevaluate in May. They are almost completely done, but some of the things they need to do is put paint on, and I think it would be kind of poor to try and do it this time of year. And that's all I have for properties. Patrolman Jim Teale will go to, or Jim Teale will go to the academy in May. The traffic cloud, that is the little flashy signs like on Howard Avenue and Thirty-Six. So the, it's time for a renewal on those. I believe those are usually split down the middle. And they've given us three options. The first one is three thousand dollars for twelve months, five thousand four hundred for twenty-four months with a six hundred dollar discount, and seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for a thirty-six month with fifteen percent discount, over thirteen fifty.
How beneficial you think those are? I mean, what's the value to the town, to your department?
I think they're somewhat beneficial as far as people are coming into the school zone, they're seeing those flashing signs. When people say there's a bunch of speeding on Anderson Street, we can put the camera there and we can actually tell how many people are in fact speeding on Anderson, or is it, you know, is that an accurate complaint, or is that just somebody that, you know?
Some grumpy person?
They've seen one car go by. I don't know about Jeff. He probably uses it probably more so than I do, I would guess.
Yeah, we kind of used to, but Indot has kind of gotten away from traffic counts. It's not as big a factor for them anymore as the actual pacer rating on streets. But still, if we needed to pull that data, I think it would be good to have. I can't say that I've really used it for the last two years.
Well, yeah, obviously, the thirty-six month is definitely a heck of a bargain compared to twelve months. What's your thoughts?
What's it cost to buy one?
Well, this is the service. This isn't the, this isn't the camera itself.
I can remember the cost. They were not cheap. So I don't know what the board has. What do you think there, Lou?
What happens if you don't update the service?
Well, yeah, I don't know. I suppose they're not useful.
So you already own the unit?
Yeah.
Would it still flash?
Did we have it last? I thought we voted to say no. I mean, we still have them, but it doesn't document anything, right?
I don't know if we're able to change, like, say I wanted to move it to a street that was forty miles an hour. I don't know that I would have the ability to change it from the thirty to the forty, or if I wanted to move it off to twenty-five onto a thirty, if I could actually change.
But it doesn't document.
It wouldn't document. It would be taking pictures and stuff like that. It would just be flashing.
Is it now?
It is right now. It takes, it takes pictures, but unfortunately, sometimes when it takes pictures, the car is already ahead of the camera.
So they went too fast. Can't get the license plate.
Well, the camera's making.
We need an accurate straight type system, like a laser.
Detail. Anybody with twenty miles an hour speed in it? We're using it more as a deterrent for people to speed than, I mean, occasionally we pull data off of it, but we're not pulling a lot of data off of it.
So if you don't have the data, it'll still flash. I mean, it'll still operate. You just won't be capturing data. I mean, if we're not using the data, why pay for it?
Well.
Do you think the savings could be used better somewhere else?
I mean, we did the thirty-six month, six thousand six hundred and fifty. We figured two thousand month, or a year. Is that worth two thousand dollars a year to have those out there?
That seems crazy. You have to pay for that if you already own the unit and all it's.
Well, it's being transferred.
It's kind of like a cellphone. You own the cellphone, but you still gotta pay for the service.
Right.
So that's probably the best way I can explain it is it's.
And we have two units?
Two units.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. Is the value, could the two thousand a year be used better somewhere else? I mean, I don't know. What's the value? I know when I see them flashing at me, it makes me pay attention more. I'm usually not going that fast anyway, but if you're over twenty-five, it starts flashing, so I'm always.
So there's nothing, I mean, there's no kind of SD cards or flash drives or anything in that unit? It all goes to the cloud.
That is my understanding.
Well, is any of that information used for grants?
We don't have any current grants that we've used. I think, I think all those grants were mainly used by Jeff prior to.
I just kind of wanted to help you guys with.
And you're just using it for counting, right? Yeah, that was primarily while we were using it for the average daily traffic count. If we don't want to go down that route, we're supposed to get one of those pneumatic counters, you know, that you stretch the hose out across the. And that wouldn't, wouldn't affect our community crossings at all? No, like I said, their community crossings, the last couple of years, haven't even asked for any average daily counts. That's not to say that, you know, later on, Indot may want it for another one. I don't know if they required it for South Market.
You know they didn't require it for that. You have one thirty-six month Howard?
Yes.
Okay. Don't we have two little ones that goes on pole, that go on poles or something?
Those are the ones we're talking about, with the ones on poles.
Oh, okay.
You're thinking of the trailer?
I'm thinking of the trailer.
These are the ones on the poles.
The ones on the poles are ones on Howard. And the other one's on thirty-six.
We're not using the data, so I don't pay for it. I mean, the deterrent really is that it's the flashing, you're going too fast.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if it's still operational, then.
Except now, I don't know. It's not recording data, so they won't worry about it.
Well, honestly, can you ticket somebody off of that anyways?
Not afterwards, could you?
So if you're like right there where you're seeing them speeding, then you could probably sign them, but you'd have to, it's kind of like if I was running my radar in my car, I'd have to actually be there to. I'm not, we're not getting any, we're not writing any tickets off of these.
I feel like we could use the money better somewhere else.
Point of having the data if we're not, if we can't use it to.
And I'm assuming we could go back and we knew it any time if we found some reason to.
I'm sure they would.
Take our money.
Okay.
Down the thing we tell you though.
I purchased some Dayton armor today. We've got two extras. We also have a female reserve, so we needed a smaller set for her, so whenever she comes out, she's also able to have the armored plates, because the ones that we currently have won't fit in her vest.
That was already in the appropriation report, Bill? Was already, was that something else?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Is that all you got?
That's all, Jeff.
Okay.
Was that one thing in here?
You ready, Jeff? Looks like you got everything listed. Are you still? It should be fairly quick, though. Community crossings ran an application for twenty twenty-three. It's called One. I have Project One would be Anderson Street. Roger gave us a revised cost estimate on that of six hundred and six thousand eight hundred and ninety, and that's going from Forty-One all the way down to Rainbow Drive. And that's with curbs and the sidewalks and the storm work as well.
Down the pine.
Twenty-five percent match for that would be one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two fifty. Project Two, which is the one point seven five, or one point five inch milling, one point seven five inch hot mix overlay. For Walton Street, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, which would be a twenty-five percent match requirement of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. And for Walton, that's going all the way back around to the cul-de-sac at the end. So that's a pretty good stretch of road. Howard Street, cost estimate on that came out to one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six, with a match of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixteen, and that's going all the way to Yuri. So what's the chances of us getting all three of those? Pretty, pretty good, I think. So we're looking at two hundred and one thousand dollar match. Yeah, whatever that comes out to, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, originally, well, where was I here? Yeah, it's about, the upside of this, I was looking at just the maximum was eight hundred and eighteen, based on what I got a few minutes ago about, about Anderson, but throwing in the other two streets, I estimated what our maximum could be. Well, we can, we, we could do the project, folks. We could do it, assuming those numbers are fairly accurate. I don't think they're gonna go over much. I think they're estimated on the high side, Jeff, I mean. Well, my question on Howard Street, what about that, where we had the emergency sewer repair a couple of years ago? I mean, they need some sub-bays work there, I'm guessing.
Well, I think we can do that. I think we can dig that up and, just like we did over here on Jefferson Street, buy our plant.
Yeah.
Doug cut that, scrubbed it off, dug down the lake base. So one thing that, you know, we will need to keep in mind is that we have a one million dollar cap for community crossings.
Per year, or per project?
Per project, well.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it's, since I have this broken down into two projects, if it's cumulative or if it's just the, you know, for example, won't extend or won't go over a million dollars on Anderson Street.
Well.
So you're looking at one, I mean, doing the first round, but having two different projects on it? Well, because there are two different kinds of treatments. And I suppose that's something I need to find out a million dollars for, on one million dollar cap, if it's per project or cumulative. And that price includes putting sidewalks to.
Pine.
Pines.
Pines.
And gutters, both sides?
Yes.
And kind of piping, I mean, I know we'd have to have piping under the gutters, but what are you thinking they're gonna tie into? They're gonna work its way down by that line by Doc, well, it's right there in the valley. There's a line that shoots across silver by Doc Yanbiannis. Through that, that's what it'll tie into and head that way.
Okay.
Which eventually, we're gonna have to do some work on that side, too, we know that. That was my concern, because, I mean, that's. Now you guys gotta be wondering about that one million dollar cap.
Well, this project, I mean, I think these estimates, I mean, twenty-five percent increase based on what we had last summer on Anderson, I think prices have not, I think that's on the high side. I don't see this project going over. I mean, you're pretty confident on your two Walton Howard?
Yeah, I was pretty confident on those, that we won't get in a situation where we're underfunded.
Well.
Something can happen tomorrow, and prices go through the roof again. I mean.
All right, right.
Yeah, I can tell you I can give you my best shot on those.
We can cash flow. You're looking at two hundred and eleven, two hundred and twelve thousand, local match, do the project. We, we, based on the handstand, you know, we were pulling money from multiple funds, seated food and beverage, motor vehicle, restricted motor vehicle.
Money on food and beverage. Did you read that email today?
Yeah, I did. I knew that was coming out. I received an email about a month ago, well, actually longer than that, last year. This is going on. They put a sunset clause on food and beverage taxes in Indiana, except the Donut County's up there around Marion and in. The Historic Hotel, West Bay and French Lake managed to get in, get in on the non-sunset clause. So nineteen, or twenty twenty, twenty forty-one would be when we would all have to, to end that, unless we have debt or something that goes beyond that. But then there's also the opportunity to petition. Well, the whole thing started was up in northeast Indy. They were using money that was questionable. They did, some people didn't like what they were using it. Yeah, yeah. I don't know if we should get involved or not. I feel like we should, but anyway.
Proceed.
Proceed. But yeah, we could pull a little money out of where we had. It's CCI and CCD. There's, there's funds in there that we've been accumulating. If need be, we could cover. But I think we'll be in pretty good shape, unless, like Jeff said, it could go up dramatically in the next six months. I don't think, well, heck, you don't know, but. What you ciphering, Jeff?
Well, even if it is a one million cap total cumulative, we're still under that with eight fifty-three.
Oh, yeah.
Eight hundred and fifty-three.
Oh, yeah. So.
I had a moment of panic there.
So we need that, we need that sent by the twenty-seven?
Yes.
Yeah, the next big concern is some right-of-way issue after the sidewalk on the north side of Anderson down to Pine. There's four property owners, I believe, we talked about the other night with Roger.
We'll need to get a document from Nick and reach out to him and see where they're at on that. I'd like to have an overlay from Roger, kind of indicating where exactly they're gonna be, so people can kind of visualize it. In, in my discussion with Roger, we're gonna go on the north side of where the actual right-of-way is, because if you get into all the utility relocation involved in putting that sidewalk on the other side of Kirby, it's just gonna be a nightmare. There's too many utilities there. So that's where we might have an issue, is people not wanting to, you know, put it out.
And once this is awarded, we have eighteen months to get done. Because that could slow down the project if we had some right-of-way issues.
But there's only four that would be involved.
Two houses, a bank, and then whoever owns the property that the general sits on. Okay.
So you want me to go ahead and proceed and try to get some financial letters, commitment, and do the applications on those, those two separate projects?
I think so.
I can do that. Twenty twenty-two dash one closes out. I'll work with Randy on that. North Michigan is awarding, awarded. We'll prepare advertisement, bid docs, and contract. I've got that on my list of stuff to do this week, and I haven't got to it yet, but.
You know, that's something that, we don't know the cost, right? I mean, we estimate about ninety thousand.
You do the estimates, and then you get the bids, and you hope you're at least close. Boy, I think I am, but.
Yeah, going from Howard all the way over to thirty-six.
Yes, yeah. It's not a bad stretch, but it's, it's one that's beat up pretty good. Electrical Department has a request for materials. These are miscellaneous materials from Brownstown. They range from bolts to this, that, and the other. I have a copy of the quote if you would like to take a look at it. Also have a hard copy of my cost estimates, and Roger's cost estimate as well, if you'd like to look at them. For the Brownstown quote, it is a total of nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Those are bolts, guy hooks. Just a wide assortment of hardware. I can pass that around also.
Well, that's Anderson Street. You're giving it here. These are your street estimates.
Yeah, I just wanted you to have a copy of that. I can, I can email to you also.
Okay. Okay, well, so who came up with this, Brett?
Yep, and that's from Brownstown. Just, you can give me an approval for nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. He said that there's a few items on there that are at least six to seven weeks out. I'm sure you're aware, it's pretty tense for them. All in favor? Thank you. Another quote that I have, and there's a work order agreement on the back, should we choose to accept that, is from Peerless on behalf of our water department. Mike got the, Peerless came in to inspect. Mike got the, Peerless came in to inspection on our pumps and wells, and what they found was, there was a, a couple valves. One of them is a gate valve, the other is a globe, globe valve?
Globe check valve.
Globe check valve. And to replace those with installation is four thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, Mike said could get a, an alternative quote if that's, if you, if you so desire. Uh, but these are the people that did the inspection on the pump, and.
Is that the unusual use?
Uh, I, I'm trying to remember in the past. I know that's who we have a maintenance agreement with. So my recommendation would be go ahead and, and have them do the work.
Yeah, I know, I mean, it's.
Hold on, favor.
All right.
IMPA, guys are back in town this week, and, yeah, they're, they're starting to string wire on our three-phase project, so that's good. Uh, the tree trimming down in our Culver for utility relocation, Brett and Dan got that done here a while back, so, pretty good to go on that.
And that big tree's all cut up, isn't it?
Yep, and the big trees, pretty well, we still have a little bit of raking to do out there, but for the most part, it's fairly cleaned up. I think that's all I've got for IMPA. Now, Dirk did send an email out wanting to know if there was a time that we could get together for a quarterly progress report, and I think Park, maybe you responded to that?
I did.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to, yeah, we met tonight, we meet tonight, so I thought, well, you know, we can try to come up with something. Any suggestions? I mean, can we do this during the day? I, I don't know.
Well, I know, I know Dirk certainly can.
Some of it can't be there during the day. It's easier in certain days of the week. But I hate to exclude anybody by putting the day, but if you don't want it today, uh, let me know.
But if you can make it, that's fine.
I can usually do it.
Okay.
Long new meetings.
Yeah, I like new meetings. It helps, except Wednesdays or Thursdays, I'm working at the mall.
Mondays aren't great for me.
Uh, you know, Tuesdays, Wednesdays.
Like a Tuesday, Wednesday?
I mean, yeah, how soon does he want to do this? This for?
Yeah, it, it would be sometime February, I think, or maybe even March.
Okay, all right, well, it's that far out. We don't need to pick a date tonight, then?
No, no. I'll get with him, and you say now Tuesdays or Wednesdays would be good.
Sounds like that, yeah.
Uh, waiting to hear back on our water improvement project, should be February, I think. Cindy said, we do have movement on our forty-one north sewer expansion project.
Trucks and stuff, are they doing out there that now tree?
Nope, that's something totally different. That's Mr. Gucci's got a little project. He's clearing some land out over there. Uh, on this, I, I think, uh, maybe Brandy has a document for signature. Is that the notice to proceed?
Yeah, I, I've got Dave's signature on it.
So we do have a notice to proceed on that. According to Brian Hood, they will begin working on the lift station installation there by the shop code place on that property. So finally, some movement on that.
Yeah, that's something I want to celebrate.
I'm assuming that pipe out there is his pipe, right?
Think so, I'm a hundred percent sure, but it would seem like it. South Park Street, utility coordination continues. I have a local quarterly report due to Endo by the twentieth. I'll probably get that submitted tomorrow. Jefferson Street Project CSI.
Hang on a minute. So how's Market Street looking? I mean, are they, is March fifteenth still on their books?
That's what they sent out in their recent update. Uh, they're saying, bid letting date's fifteenth. Let's hope that.
March fifteenth.
Doesn't come in any harm with the very estimated. So it looks like they have, Jeff, utility relocation twenty-three and a road construction actually being twenty-four.
Yep. What, what I'm concerned about, and what I need to pull a meeting together for is to really get with PCI and, and Mr. Mees and pull some people together and really talk about how we're gonna do that feed and projecting on whether or not Market Street is gonna be available this year for Bridge Fest. And I think it's kind of up in the air. I had IMPA, I M P A, Mike Adams, was looking at some solutions there on the courthouse side, on the west side, about possibly going underground with some junction boxes and stuff like that. And, man, I tell you what, the more I think about that, I, I think that's gonna be so, it, it's gonna be expensive. I don't have the numbers yet, but it may be something where we look at, we know we're gonna have decorative poles along there, and maybe something that we get a design on a decorative pole that can actually hold wire to, so we can continue to go overhead and feed, feed those shacks. Number one, that's the way the shacks are set up now. Your vendors are gonna have to have a pretty good expense to, to change those to underground if we decide to go with a ground level feed. I don't know. I mean, that's, that's gonna be you guys' call, but I'm just.
So are all those shacks two, I mean, they require two-twenty?
Probably not so.
I, I couldn't tell you. I, I don't know what they take deep.
Okay. I mean, they, they have their own meter base, right?
Yes.
Okay. Something else on that. You want to be involved in a walk-through? Oh, it'd probably be sometime next week.
Yeah, for Miller?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd do that.
Okay, I'll make sure you're on the.
Shoot me a text in a day.
Okay.
Anyway, once I get something firm from Mike, I, I think we really need to pull some people in and, and kind of pull all this together and make some decisions on which way we want to go with it, because obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of planning involved in that, the Bridge Fest. I know Nisa would need to know, yesterday, if, if we're gonna be able to have that, that side open or not.
Yeah, at this point, I, I mean, I would say no, based on the timeline we're given, some structure points, that will probably not be a factor. I don't know.
Couldn't they not just close Jefferson through traffic and?
That'd make a mess.
I know, but.
Well, you gotta have traffic closed somewhere around this. If they're closed over here, then they go one over there. You better have a little, well, uh, then they'd be down a non-stop light intersection down. That'd be more dangerous, probably. So I don't know, but yeah, we need to really get on top of, what you got next, Jeff?
Okay, Jefferson Street Project, last two streetlights are in. Fights, still has a few things to do on the punch list. I'll let you know when those are completed. The charging station information, still, when Ronnie Junior's ready for that, we can do it. The Jackson Voorhees Beetle Project, P E R's in progress for water and sewer. I know Millers has been doing the video camera work on sewers, and I need to get that to Roger when, whenever those guys have that done.
Send me an email about that, so I can.
Okay. Parking lot paving, we met with Roger last week to talk about that, and the lights and all this, that and the other. He's gonna get us some firm property lines, measured out. It looks like we're gonna be able to pick up some more angle parking on that south end, and, uh, chair curbs, storm line, grades, water access. We talked about all those things, and paving on the northeast corner of Jefferson in York to alleviate the entryway, the problem with the entryway to the dentist lot, and also gravel around that storm drain. But, but according to structure point, by design was not paved. Why that is, I don't know.
So, so the big issue at the meeting was, okay, can we establish that south line? Do, do, have you heard back from Roger on any, any?
Nothing dependent. I think he was still gonna be talking to that.
You know, we'd like to put this thing out to bid by. You got any idea when?
Yeah, no, uh.
Has anyone?
Well, we got April?
No.
Well.
Yeah, a little bit prior to April.
We need to have, we need to have something down before mid-February, because that's when our due date is for our, um, creative spaces.
Okay.
So we need, we need to have something way before February fifteenth, because I think that's our dead, our deadline.
We got about three weeks.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We need to get that done.
Roger needs to be, uh, aware of that, I guess.
Put that on his list.
Just, have you talked to Kevin? Does he know? I thought when we first were doing a walkthrough, he kind of indicated where their property line was.
Well, kind of did.
Well, I mean, I felt like he knew.
Kevin.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Well, the thing is, you need an actual identifiable point that's been recorded in the courthouse.
There's, Greg Norman helped us out, but we've identified some pins up there that.
But the, the problem there is, it wouldn't stand up in court, as Roger.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, though, but we have an idea, you know, as soon as we can get Roger to get a survey.
Yep. Tree trimming, I'm working on that. Storm line cleanout, working on that. You Mac, Mike, you got anything for us, buddy?
Uh, yeah, there was one thing I didn't get you sent, so I don't know, present to the board. Got a quote from Utility Supply for a downflow meter. It goes for one wells, and the one, the last well needs a meter. I guess over the last two or three years, it's been replacing two meters at a time. So there's one left to do.
Cool.
And the quote from Utility Supply is fifty-seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And then, of course, you gotta have full flanks with that, that's a million and nine dollars on the well. Yeah, one is nine dollars, that's a bad score. But I want to present that thing, and, you know, ponder over that, what you want to decide to do.
What's going on, uh, yeah, Mike?
Uh, I guess the oil total's gonna be fifty-seven hundred and nineteen.
And what's that for, Mike, it's a?
That's a downflow meter. Measures what's coming out of the.
Tower?
No, what we're pumping out of the well.
Uh, well.
To the plant.
Okay. Oh, we should know that.
Yes. I think we have to do that.
Yeah, well, I, I think we need to proceed, do we not, uh?
Is that a motion?
Well, I, I hate to make motion out of something on paper, but you can send something.
Why don't you send it to Brandy if she wants to print it off real quick?
Well, why don't you get something on, yeah, we should have at least something printed out in front of us and be formal about it. Meanwhile, Jeff, where else yet?
Okay, Brett started, tried to start. I don't know if he got to tonight. On the lights down at Beechwood Park, personnel, I was able to fill, uh, three out of four. I had four out of four for the general labor until six-thirty, nine AM this morning. And I had somebody tell me to accept another position, so I still have one general labor spot I'm trying to fill. Began lineman interviews today, and will conclude next Wednesday, so hopefully that following Friday. I have a recommendation for you on the apprentice lineman. Another discussion I have with Roger involved the I and I plan infiltration. He, he had talked to Bruce down at the plant, and he got some flow rates and that kind of thing. And he also has data from structure point that he thinks would be pretty useful. At our storm meeting, which is in February fifteenth.
Yeah.
Roger's gonna come, and he's gonna also talk about the, you know, you guys have asked us to put together a plan for I and I, and I think he has some good thoughts on that.
Yeah, we need to be ready for our I D M when they do their visit.
Yep.
Uh, good.
So that's, uh, February fifteenth, seven o'clock, Storm Board Cemetery Meeting. Brandy, I don't know if we can do this sometime next Monday, the twenty-third, at twelve at Town Hall. We can do that time. Okay. Thank you.
Is that next Monday?
Are you on the cemetery board?
Yeah, it's Monday.
You are. I, I can't, I'm old, I can't remember stuff. I don't write it down. Um, okay.
Said if he didn't want to.
She volunteered.
Okay, you volunteer, he shall, you, you don't want to owe her, you, but no, okay, well, good. So you are on the board. I was confused. Uh, I'm sorry, Monday?
If you want to, you can do it.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Monday, Monday is, was that good for you?
Oh, frankly, my, it's okay. If you want to do it, I can tell them.
We can move that, too.
Well, we can, yeah.
It's up to you.
I know Carla was okay, but Mondays aren't good with her.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Noon Monday.
Noon Monday, okay. Don't do it again, though. Make it Tuesday or Wednesday?
No.
I got it taken care of.
Okay.
Noon Monday will work.
Okay, good.
Be great.
Okay, good. Um, all right.
And then the last thing I had, other than the cemetery board meeting, was Mike, Brad, and Brandy already hit on that, so.
Yeah, it's tomorrow, Wednesday, yeah, tomorrow night. I'm off a day. Uh, okay, Jeff, what questions do I have?
Can you bring up that?
Okay, so has Miller, has Miller shot that darn sewer yet? Does anybody, has Miller shot the sewer yet, or that?
Can we move on this wall?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, we got this, this thing that Mike was talking about.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, favor.
Bye.
All right. Okay.
There you go, Roy.
Um, has Miller shot the video yet on, on Jackson Voorhees? They, they, okay, okay. So that's, that's one question I, I was wondering about, uh, what's this thing Kyle Kirk singer, the prison of flow chart power? What's going on with that? What is that?
So there's, we have a flow meter out there that we use to gauge our billing off.
Right.
And it's been without power here for a couple of months.
Which properties?
Well, it's, it's the prisons, and they're, they're aware of it. Doug's made them aware of it since, gosh dang, I think it was in November even. He said, hey, you guys need to get the power back on, and they can't figure out where the power's coming from at all. So I gave him a buzz, and of course, he's got his hands full with the roof, with the pipes breaking and stuff over there, too. But I said, hey, we, we really need to have you guys connect that power backup. I even offered to send Brett out with his locator to, to see if we could pinpoint that, but.
Okay.
They, they've got to get that back operation.
Well, yeah, I know, over a couple of years. Couple of years, we estimated, because our meter broke, or, or, well, we estimated what was recent, but actually, water. Anyway, wonder what that was. Uh, so what are we doing? I heard some talk, I think, earlier about light poles on forty-one, and Jeff, Klyts, Klits, Klyts?
Klyts, yeah. Uh, so, a lot of the issue has, you know, responded to Mr. Ader, because he was questioning your.
Yeah, that's another thing I want to ask.
So Road responded to, but I think you got that response.
I did, yes.
Okay. So we're having issues with getting replacement parts for some of those streetlights. So we're in the process of trying to convert them over to LEDs.
You're talking the poles on forty-one?
Yes, poles on forty-one. So that's why you get some that are brighter and some are a little dimmer. There's gonna be that until we all get them switched over to LEDs.
What's the cost per light?
Well, I'm still waiting on a quote for that. He made us a promotional offer that I sent out for quotes from Brownstown, Ray Bar, and Kirby Risk. I should get those anytime. And it was, buy two, get two free.
Oh, you gotta love the two for two.
Now, after that, it'll be a different price, which, which I'll have to get, but.
Well, of course.
So, yeah, that, that's kind of what's going on with the streetlights. It's, we're caught in that.
Well, I guess it's.
Kind of that middle period of, of trying to get everything converted over and, and repair what we can at the parks.
You know, another issue we have, they pay, we just paid to have those poles, I guess you could call professionally repaid, paid it, I don't know.
And they're already looking trash again.
You know, the prep work is always critical on metal. I, I think, I, I, I don't know who.
Some of the metal was almost.
Uh, but yeah, they're already, already looking pretty bad.
And, and we can't take anymore off there, I mean, safely. I can't, we can't run anymore off there.
Well, I already said, why should we put these LED units on poles that we don't know what?
I think they should be, and I better check on that, too, because I need to see what's going on there.
Yeah. Yeah.
One of my thoughts going along with that is, do we go back with steel bars or do we go with an aluminum?
I think aluminum's the way you want to go.
But we already know that the steel hasn't held up very.
Steel, yeah, yeah, it's not going to work. I think this aluminum is the way to go. Oh, somewhere I read, somebody sent out something about the signals, apart from you, Jeff, the signals up here on the intersections. What do you know from Endo about when they're gonna be there?
It's about two years out.
Two years?
Yes.
Good Lord. Uh, and we still, we've indicated we prefer to have the black deputy, not the.
Can you just keep moving?
I know, it's gonna move, heck, it's been going on for four or five years. Okay, so that's it. What's, what was the one light that the town board didn't want on on forty-one? I don't remember that.
It's the one somewhere down by the corner, I think. And Brett told me that, that he was told to leave that off because it was too bright. And when that buzzed, I, I didn't follow up with a lot of questions.
Yeah, I have the recollection, uh, of what, what.
But, but there was a reason why the, it wasn't turned on. He said, no, he specifically did not want that one on.
Huh, well, he must've had complaints, I, I don't know. Uh, well, we could turn it back on, it's your complaint. Maybe we'd know, right? Uh.
One way.
Huh?
That's one way to figure it out.
Well, yeah.
I may have an idea on that.
You may? Well, I don't know, it seems, uh, when we have a light and we don't use it, it's kinda.
Well, I agree.
We could take it down, use it for replacement on the poles we got smashed or something.
Well, we could just turn it back on.
Well, we could and see what happens. I don't recall it, I don't know when that would've been.
When in my time.
Uh.
I'll tell you later.
Okay.
Just.
What?
For your own information, too, uh, you know, I told the guys and, and they started doing a fun list today, trying to get some of the trash and, and leaves, picked up, you know, the debris from the winter time stuff that accumulates.
Yeah.
Uh, so, hopefully, we can get that hogged up quite a bit.
Okay, I think that's about all I.
Well, I think on the leaves, especially around the gutters, I mean, it, it does no good to just brush them back. I mean, you gotta get them, you gotta pick them up.
Yeah.
I mean, and at this point, what, what I'd see, right, the, the courthouse kinda bothers me, cause I don't think we're supposed to be taking care of the, the courthouse sidewalk. I, I could be wrong on that. But, uh, if anybody knows for sure, please let me know, because I, I, I don't like seeing that stuff up there.
Don will let you know.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
I think they think it's the town's problem.
Well, it depends on what needs to be done, maybe, I don't know, anyway.
But anyway, I, I told, I told the guys, I said, I don't think it's dogs and spams, I don't know, but, uh, we're gonna clean it up anyway, uh, just because, like, you know, kinda.
Are they gonna work on a drive around on the gutters? Because there are several that are covered in leaves, some plastic bags over the gutters.
Yeah, for the storm drains.
Yes.
Yep.
Tree limbs in the gutters.
Yeah.
I can give you a list if you'd like.
Oh, I know.
I can see it plenty.
I know. Uh, I kinda pulled a movie with our sweeper that had a little curb room on it. Uh, may have accidentally bent that. A little bit, I tried to get a little too deep down into the gutter, and, yeah, so, that's operator error on my part.
Okay.
We'll get it fixed. All right.
So, where are we at?
We're at old business.
Old business.
The Cooper.
The Cooper thing, goes back twenty eighteen, last meeting twenty eighteen is when we approved that. Contractor to go dig up his, uh, well, actually, we're supposed to board, the problem is, they dug it up. Uh, so, yeah, we, we've got, uh, what was that document that Nick prepared?
So, is he?
Huh?
Is he in agreement?
He is, he signed it, had notarized, release of all claims, uh.
It was all n- notarized and?
Yeah, it's been notarized, and so, we're, we're good. Nick said, if he's signed, notarized, that we're good. He's happy, and we're happy, and I guess Cooper be happy.
Okay. You wanna make a motion, or?
I'll move.
Second.
On favor?
Bye.
All right, uh, you know, next question is, it's been four years, but do we want to have Nick to look at, uh, going on the contractor, uh, for, for any claim? I don't know toward doing, we might ask that.
Yeah.
What the statute is?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, there was a promissory made, I'm assuming that they should've been in some kind of agreement on that, but.
Well, yeah.
They could take care of the damages.
Uh. Okay.
You good?
On that, yeah.
Okay.
I got other stuff.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, one thing, we had a donation to the town for, for the cemetery from a, uh, uh, an individual, and I don't know, I, I think I responded, I don't know who was on the email, we've talked about it for years. We need to get a, a fund set up, the foundation for people to be able to donate to the cemeteries in Rockville, and, and, um, I don't know, I, I, I don't know who to assign the task, but I, I don't know what's, it shouldn't be that hard, uh, Nick, heck, he's, he's on that board, is he not, or?
Which board?
Community Foundation, probably, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it'd be nice to start doing that, so we have an ability to take donations and, and keep them permanent, just use the proceeds and dividends, interest, whatever, the earnings off those funds to help maintain the cemetery. Um, we have thirty thousand in permanent fund on the, uh, uh, fund report, it's been around, gosh, decades. Uh, and I don't know, again, that's an interesting thought there, well, can, can we take that and, and, and put that into a permanent fund at the foundation and just carry that in our fund report as, you know, cemetery, foundation cemetery, cemetery fund? You know, a couple of questions, but we, we, we could use donations like this to put in the fund. I, 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 I don't know, they have a minimum amount, I think their minimum amounts are fairly low to start, uh, um, fund over there. Certain foundations have higher thresholds, they're not too high. So, I, I assume the board would be interested in pursuing.
Yes.
Said, thank, I suppose since I'm the one that brought it up, I should volunteer to, uh, go talk to, uh, Brad, and, uh, while we do that, as long as the board has no objection, and see what we can get figured out, and I'll send an email to Nick about it, and, uh, what'd you do with this money that came in? Did you just put it?
I put it in the cemetery. I think I created a separate donation line.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll volunteer to go talk to Nick, or not Nick, Brad, uh, for all those.
And if you guys have some concrete ideas on, on, uh, what we can do with that money as far as, so- something that, that's.
Well, yeah, yeah. Well, this, you know, this, this money that was donated, I mean, it'd be nice to start putting it in a fund. You gotta start someday. Um, you know, it, it's, 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 I don't know, Jeff, yeah. Uh, what else, what else? Uh, regional sewer meetings, eight twenty-five, or one twenty-five, when is that? That's next week?
Uh, I thought it was the twenty-sixth, um, is it Wednesday?
It's Wednesday, is that twenty-five, twenty-six? Uh, the thing is, the twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth.
All right.
Uh, ten to twelve, then one thirty to three. Um, I'll be there, I, I.
I think Cindy said I just really needed to be at the Tindell.
But, um, so anyway, that's gonna be interesting to, to hear about. Uh, we have a, uh, redevelopment meeting next Tuesday, nine to twenty-four. I, I printed these forms off, Ray, uh, Roy sent them out, their appointment, we, you need to, I think, take those, complete the top, take those with us to the meeting, so you can get sworn in and stuff. Uh, cemetery board is next morning at noon. Next noon, uh, next Tuesday at noon, next noon, next Tuesday at noon. Uh, a fellow from Midwest called, he used to actually be the clip trader of, uh, Shelburne, has been for almost forty years, quite capable individual. Knows a lot, he actually is working now, he retired from that job after decades, and is working with, uh, Midwest. Uh, Legotti, and, uh, just out of, uh, respect more than anything, I mean, I, I know the guy, I've heard good things about the fellow for a long time, and Brandy's actually knows, knows who this individual is, and has talked to him a few times. Uh, but he wanted to come up and just introduce himself, and, uh, we're going to meet, Brandy and I, with him next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at noon, anybody else wants to meet with us, I'm, I'm, you're more than welcome to, but I don't want to, well, I'll let you know we are, I, I thought it would be rude to not do so, I mean, he, uh, uh, is well respected in the industry as far as clip trader and, uh, so, yeah, so that's going on. Uh, gosh, what else? You don't need to know about that meeting, that's something else, that's not ten. Well, David, I think I'm getting to the end. Um, make sure I got on my notes, gave those things to you. Uh, oh, Brandy, you said that the software finally, they had their updates finally?
Yes, it was released yesterday.
So, uh.
We'll work on closing that out and.
Yay.
Getting some.
So, when can we get our rates updated? How we, how is that?
Those have already been sent to Keystone.
Oh, okay.
So, we just are kinda waiting on them, but they won't become till the April bill?
Really?
March bill?
Which would be?
Cause we're, we're behind, so we'll have to have all of, so March.
Okay, they'll be in the March first?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They're effective January first.
Yes, yes, but they won't be until the March.
Right.
Oh, I give this another.
But, yeah, Keystone has all that.
Six weeks, uh, so, yeah, all right. I'm done.
To live, to live. Okay, well, I wanted to touch on something. I went to the police board meeting, uh, the other night. Just wanted to touch on a couple of things that just keep coming up. Uh, one of them, this IC code that I'm gonna give you is basically the development of, of the police commission, what it took to get the, and I'm not gonna go through all of it, I just wanted to point, point out two things. Uh, the IC code is thirty-six dash eight dash nine dash three point one. Um, the fourth, the fourth, um, thing in here, uh, explains how the, the terms are, are done. So, it, it's basically, it says, the terms of each board member expire January one of the third year of membership appointment. So, it's a three-year appointment, so everybody knows that. The other thing is about being removed from that board. The town legislative body may remove a board member for any cause that the legislative body cons- considers significant. So, it doesn't even require cause. If, I just want you, everybody to know that that's, that's the way that is, that's the way that reads. So, and Nick's the one that researched this, so, anybody wants a copy, I'm sure Brandy'd be more than happy to, to, uh, copy it and give it to you, so. Uh, a couple of other things that we keep talking about with the Rockville Police Department, going out of town. Now, I'm not gonna put any kind of mileage on you. I, I, my, my thing is, we had, have, gave you guys some pretty hefty raises, I, I believe, I think the board believes that. So, in, in that, I believe that the, the people of this town deserve to have twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five coverage. I mean, that's been fought for, for years on this board. I mean, you know.
Been debated for years.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so, I, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you that you can't put, you know, a tire out of town, I'm not saying that, Bill, I'm not saying that to you, and I'm, I'm not, but I also wanna know that if somebody's breaking into my house, or anybody's house in this town, at two or three o'clock in the morning, are you gonna be able to respond within five, six minutes? I mean, that's all I wanna know. I mean, that, I think that would put this to bed, that, obviously, if you were a gobbler's knob, I don't think you can make that happen. Uh, so, I, I mean, so where's that line? I don't know. But I just feel like the people of this town deserve to have their coverage. Uh, I, does anybody disagree with that?
Well, yeah, it's only logical, dude, I mean, that's who's paying their fees, and that's who that they, they work for, the citizens of Rockville. You know, I haven't, I, 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 I haven't seen, I mean, last year, the out of town calls, two years ago, the out of town calls weren't very significant based on percentage of the whole, and, and, and I believe, I say calls, they were actually called out of town by the sheriff's department. But the point is legitimate, you, 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 you expect them to be when, here when needed, because that's where they, they, they.
Well, I mean, this is something that you, this won't go away.
Well, it seems like it keeps coming up. I know that some people think, well, they shouldn't be one put out of town, another individual, and I think the majority of this board at least feels that, uh, you know, they go out of town to, you gotta turn around somewhere, and you can't stop and back up. That's, that's, that's not appropriate. So, yeah, I, I don't see any, you know, you said nothing about mileage, but, you know, just about mileage, Bill, you know, I just talked to a retired, uh, chief from a very large town, uh, the other day, and, and it was interesting how he, he, I asked him about fuel, I said, well, how in the world, I mean, he had like fifty-some officers, and he said, well, I divided it up to the officers, and every month, you had your gas, and if you went over, you know, you're buying it till, till you get to the next month. See, it got me curious to just calculate, I think we set your fuel budget at twenty-five thousand, and that's two thousand eighty-three a month, and that's three hundred forty-seven gallons per officer for six, six vehicles. You've probably already looked at this, but, uh, so, yeah, I don't know what your, uh, how you're gonna do it, but it was fun to hear a guy explain how, how he went about it, and, um, you know, it's like a fifteen miles a gallon, uh, average, that's like fifty-two hundred miles. Of course, a lot of times, these guys, if you're a few vehicles running a lot, they're running constantly. So, your mileage is probably a lot worse.
I don't think that's true as much anymore, is it?
Well.
The current vehicle policy is that if you're not in your vehicle.
Oh, is it?
You're not on a call.
You shut it off?
Then your vehicle is to be shut off.
Well, save some gas.
Now, if you're on a call, like a wreck.
Yeah, right.
And you got your lights on, it's running, if you go to a domestic, you don't have time to shut your car off, you're gonna run inside and take care, or, you know, you're gonna approach that and take care of it. Uh, other than that, if you're going into the police department, you're going out to eat, whatever you're doing, or you're going out and you don't need to have your car running, it is to be shut off.
Oh, well, that's probably a good idea. Uh, anyway, yeah, I mean, I'm not worried about the mileage so much, you're just, you know, trying to keep, keep the budget under control, but, uh, go on, David.
Well, I, I'm just, that was basically what I was gonna say, I mean, it, it was pointed out at the meeting that the safety commission doesn't have anything to do with the budget, so obviously, they're basically putting it back in our laps as far as the budget, which is, it was always there. So, I, I mean, I just wanted to have, you know, like you said, we put some expectations out there for Jeff, and, and I don't feel like it's Michael managing, some people may think it is, but it's not like, I mean, have I called you one time? Have I said, have you got this done? Have you got this done? I, I mean, we just had some stuff that we wanted, you know, things to be done, and, and, you know, so far, I think you're doing a good job of it, so, you know, I, I mean, I just, for me, I, I, I'd mentioned that night about keeping the cars clean. I, to me, that's not a big deal, I don't think it's a big, I, I mean, I think, I mean, you guys are using the cars, and I, to me, that's not a big deal. I mean, if you can't wash your own car for a couple of times a month, that's, you know, I mean, I look at state troopers' car all, all the time, they're never dirty. I don't know how the hell they do it, but they, those cars are never dirty.
They don't leave the highway.
Well, that's, that's one thing, but, I mean, still, I, I mean, even in snow, they don't seem to be dirty, so I don't know what they've got on those cars, but, you know, I, I mean, that's just kind of a.
What color are they?
I mean, it's a, it's a town asset.
New ones are white?
State troopers' cars are white.
Well, no, what color are they?
Gray.
They're gray, darker light.
Dark gray.
Yeah, darker colors are perfect to keep clean.
Yeah, you know what? The white doesn't shed thirty, you'd think it would, but it doesn't as much till it gets just.
Well, if you guys need bays, or I've got power washers. On that, that's, that's basically what I said down there. I mean, we've got a bay that you guys wash in, it's not, well, it's not the end of the world. I mean, that, to me, that's a town asset, we're paying for it, so I feel like we got a little bit of control over it, so, you know, and, and, and like was stated by John, you know, we're, we let you run your department, I mean, but I just, I don't know, that's just one of the things, I guess it's a pet peeve of mine, and it's apparently a pet peeve of other people, cause people have mentioned it to me, so, you know, I mean, I, I just don't think it's that big of a deal to, you know, scrub a car down once in a while, so. But, I mean, if anybody disagrees, now, now's the time to tell me, cause I, I, you know, I'm just, I'm just one person, so.
Well, you know, it's only logical, you gotta be able to see the, the, the markings on the car, and it's, 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 it's a cool thing to do to me, I mean, I.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Shows professionalism.
You told me that they don't recommend running through.
I did not say that.
Okay, well, somebody, uh, someone of you guys had said something about.
I said you give us a forty thousand dollar car to drive, wash the damn thing.
Yeah, I, I agree.
But, uh.
Somebody did say you use those automatic car washes all the time, it'll take the emblems off.
So.
But, uh, well, anyway, um, what else, David?
No, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm.
So, anyway, I.
Off my soapbox.
I don't know who sent me the minutes, anyway, I got the minutes from the meeting, thinking, uh, somebody sent them out. Yeah, so you guys are working on some stuff for the new, new building that, uh, you're gonna need, uh, yeah, I mean, we, we are probably twelve months out from being down there, um. Well, that's good, thinking ahead, planning ahead, seeing how we can fit in the budget.
And, uh, Josh had mentioned something to me about that, and I was gonna send out an email, uh, about the, the fire extinguishers that are down there in, in the RMC. RMC contracts, of course, and.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm sure that all of those are going to be gone.
Mm-hmm.
When RMC moves out, so we wanted to be on top of making sure that we have enough, our extinguishers, and, and Josh said that he kinda worked on that a little bit, and see what we're gonna need, so we have it ahead of time.
Okay.
And that, that comes back to, and, and I know you guys don't know right now what's gonna happen to some of these other buildings, but being able to pull, I'm, I'm gonna assume that we're gonna retain possession of a lot of these buildings, um, and so that the, the number of fire extinguishers that we're actually able to move is gonna be kinda small, probably.
Well, I'm sure initially, we won't make any changes hardly at all, but eventually, we might make some, so, yeah, I mean, it's not a big deal, you know.
But he was, he was just. But he was, he was just thinking ahead and, you know, I'm sure that would be.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I went to the Main Street meeting.
You did?
Okay.
When was that?
Huh?
When was that?
Last week.
Last week. Well, so, any issues we, should be concerned about?
They have, there's, uh, yearly schedule for their events planned. I'm assuming they'll be bringing that.
Okay.
Probably next meeting, maybe.
Yeah.
After their next meeting. Um, they just did their officers and looked over some budget items. They want us to, um, reconsider the lights around the courthouse.
In what way?
The cur, the lights. They would like the white lights.
Yeah, I know. Uh.
I thought one time we talked about adding.
They said they would get, somebody said they would buy white lights, especially for the north side and that we would turn ours off for a period of time.
And I, I had thought that too, but then they said that somebody had said that the poles wouldn't.
Well, the poles, the new poles on the east, west side, when they go up, may not be able to accommodate lights being strung across from pole to pole is what the conversation was I was, you know, at or involved in.
And I know the, uh, the aluminum poles on the very west, west side, I know those are going to come out with relocation and the deck is going to go back there.
So, so like, any, any other lights, any other issues?
Did you get Santa's workshop off the courthouse lawn yet, or is he going to sit there till March again?
It did come off, I think, the end of last year.
Well.
Okay.
Well, they, um, I don't want to say discouraged, but they were, I guess discouraged would be the nicest word. That nobody from our board was at the hometown holidays, the parade.
Well, nobody from their board, I don't believe, was at the Grand Open in Jefferson Street, so.
I'm just passing it along.
You know, if they want to do a tit for tat, I gotta do it all.
No, 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 no.
You were.
You were, you were a member elect.
Yeah, there you go.
So that, that counts.
But I let him know that Dave was very complimentary of the parade and the hometown holidays and that we had discussed participating next year.
That's for sure.
Well, we were out of town. That's not an excuse, but I mean, we were out of town. I would, actually, like, probably after seeing it, it would have been kind of.
I was out of town as well. I got back just about the time it was.
Saturday night, wasn't it? That's probably a bid.
It, it was cool.
Could have been.
Yeah, I just, I said that.
We had a great time.
You were very complimentary of the, that we talked about.
I think, I, I mean, Main Street does a good job with their event.
I've always been happy. Very effective organization. They grumble a lot, but they've been good for the community, no doubt about it. Um, so, yeah.
Hopefully, they'll keep up the good work, so.
I think so.
Hey, you think they could, uh, when they get that yearly event schedule, you think they could put down a list of, uh, when they want some of these banners up and down annually? And that way, I can try to put them on a calendar format. Is that all you have for them, Melissa?
Oh, yeah, my thrive was central community development or economic development meetings, organizational meetings next Monday.
Okay.
So I'll be at that next Monday.
Any, any questions or comments from the audience?
I'm going to make a motion to a chair.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aight.